Enter. And so we are Unified Board standing behind our superintendent and we're asking that the unify with us as well so that we can ensure that Benton Harbor area school is successful. If the commission would like to answer any questions, you will need to pay so. I know that you have a busy agenda ahead, so if not, you communicate with us via email or phone.
Are there any statements or of course, Dr. Griffin already did her interview. So we're here just as an introductory kind of FYI, but if there are any statements that the council or encouragement, you can be, I'd like to recognize First Ward Commissioner, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Congratulations on becoming our great community. It's very important you come into our community. Thank you for coming to the building.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Henderson. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Large Canard.
Thank you for being here. We'd like to welcome you here and I look forward to coming to some of the meetings. And seeing how you work with our view. I worked for 26 years in the school. And I'm an old girl now, so I'm back in that young. So thank you.
My pleasure and I honor your service. I've been in this since 1998, so I honor your service. You're welcome anytime. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Fourth Ward Commissioner Clark Griffin.
I'm glad to see you here. I'm glad that you were selected because before I didn't make it to the meetings because I was so busy, but all I heard was number two. I think you were number two and I know the Griffin. So it's glad to see another Griffin in the neighborhood doing good. So, hey. So, yeah.
Thank you.
And my husband, Mama, is from Illinois, so you never know. So, yeah, so I'm glad and happy to connect with you and let's get some more things going on good for the people.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Ms. Griffin. I should have known that Clark Griffin was somebody of excellence.
I recognize Commissioner Large Isom.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I want to welcome you to the City of Benton Harbor. Thank you. I know you're going to do a great job and come see us after the 90 days and just...
Will do. I'd be glad to.
Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Chair recognizes City Manager Little.
Look forward to working with you.
Thank you and I look forward to working with each and every one of you as well as our students, our community, our families, everyone else. We all have a part in our success, so thank you.
Chair recognizes Third Ward Commissioner Henry.
I would love to welcome you here and this might be the second go around where government and school board work together, so I'm looking forward to more collaboration on, with the school board and the school. This is a new thing for Benton Harbor and I thank you for bringing all of these other new ideas in.
My pleasure. One of the things I want to be really clear about is I don't know what happened prior to my arrival, but above all, my doors open. Given the heavy lift that we have before us regarding academics, socio-emotional wellness, mental wellness, and college readiness, I can ill afford to close my door on any opportunity for our students. So I look forward to collaborating with you all for sure, so pick up the phone when I call.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Dr. Griffin, for your presentation and welcome on behalf of the City of Benton Harbor. I do have three children, one senior at Benton Harbor High School, one freshman, and one that is a student at Fair Plains. So I'm a proud graduate, 1993, and a tiger through and through. So however we can support your efforts to transform and change this proud district, our resources are at your disposal. Thank you.
This is taped, right?
Yes.
All right.
This is on YouTube.
I look forward to those resources. Thank you so much, Mayor Muhammad. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
This brings us to our next presentation on the city commissioner's agenda, which is
a presentation, and this will be the first in the social media era, starting with MySpace to Black Planet, all the way to Instagram, Facebook, X, TikTok, you name it. We do have our very capable student from Andrews University, Bearin Springs graduate, and of course, Mr. Benton Harbor, and that is none other than Nick Gunn. He is our social media czar and I yield to Mr. Gunn.
All right. Thank you. Good evening to the commission and to our community. For the past year, I've been able to work with the city with our social media and this is just a brief social media update. We were able to give this update in July to Commissioner Henry's committee in communication. So just want to give you all a quick update and see some of the positive work that the city has been doing for its residents. So we'll begin with our introduction and we have a summary. Some of the, we'll share some of the communication strategies that we've been able to go about with keeping our residents engaged. We also talk about some of the community engagement and some of our project highlights that we, we've been able to work with. Just a brief introduction, over the past year, the City of Benton Harbor has embraced the power of social media to strengthen communication with its residents while using a growing, growing social media presence such as Facebook and Instagram to keep our residents better informed. Just our summary, from infrastructure improvements to, and community engagement efforts to economic development and public safety updates, this overview showcases how city is, how the city is keeping, keeping up work and working to show collaboration, transparency, and innovation and showing that Benton Harbor is moving forward. So here are some of our communication strategies that we've been able to use with visual engagement. We, using high-quality images, really just trying to make sure that our residents are seeing the full picture and making sure that it's all just high-quality and just making sure that residents are seeing the full picture as if they were there at those, some of those projects and some of these different developments that are happening within the city. We also have different public service announcement, announcements that we regularly put out and just seek, seek input from residents and also just be able to gain residence input on different things that we're putting out. Video-driven storytelling, as we all know, with social media, a lot of videos are usually captivate audiences better than usually just a photo or just a typical flyer that residents may just see. So using and showcasing some of these video, video posts, it's, it's also, it's able to show an authentic voice with, with residents and they're able to be more attractive to some of the videos that we put out. Highlighting in partnerships, we are typically showcasing different partnerships that the city is undergoing, different work that's happening within the city and, and just showcasing how we just collaborate with so many different community partners and how we are just coming together to strengthen our community. And again, lastly, just positive messaging. We all, we all just make sure that, you know, we're using positive wording and wording that is, that is understandable for residents to quickly read and making it as simple as possible for, for everyday individual to just be engaged. So here are just some of the numbers. Again, we started in June of 2024, just creating a Facebook page, an Instagram page. We have over 1,000 followers combined. We've been able to, to gain over 1,519 comments, over 2,000 shares, many impressions, ton of engagement, and a ton of reach. And I have a sidebar there just if, if there's a word that you may not understand or know in social media terms, it just outlines it all there for you. We can go into some of the numbers, just on Facebook. We went, if you want to just check YouTube and you'll see the full presentation that we did and we were able to go more in detail, but these are real numbers for everyone to Project highlights, we've been able to put out different positive messaging with, when it comes to some of the press that we've been able to put out. We've highlighted our Summer Youth Works Program. Even this Friday, we have something that'll be going out that's really positive about the Summer, Summer Youth Works Program and how those students are gaining work experience. Highlighting, we've had these different community projects, you know, with different ribbon-cutting ceremonies, just sharing the story behind those ceremonies and new developments that are happening in the city. Again, and just putting out different updates, like we're hiring. Those usually garner a lot of, a lot of attention as well. We also had, we used, on some Fridays, we, we partnered with the Morton House Museum to showcase some of our community's history. So Fun Fact Friday, we were able to put out different fun fact tidbits for residents to be able to, to understand the history of our community and I think that's been able to go over quite well also. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gunn, for that presentation. I'd like to just open up for any questions from the council regarding the social media outreach and program that is in its seminal stages, but I think that you have made a lot of progress thus far and we look forward to greater work.
Thank you.
The chair recognizes the Communications Chairman, Commissioner Juanita Henry.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is a much-needed process in Benton Harbor. Transparency, getting the word out to the people. Mr. Gunn, he came on board last year and this is the first time we've been able to look at the progress that he's made. I was impressed when he came to my committee, but it also showed me that it wasn't enough, that we have to find other ways to communicate with our people because everyone was not on Facebook or Instagram or social media. So that just let us know that we've got a lot more work to do and I appreciate our city manager setting this up. We'll keep track of it. It's going to grow, I'm sure, but we do have to come up with other ways to communicate and let the people know what's going on in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Commissioner Clark Griffin.
I just want to say, how do you go by selecting what you're going to put on that page and is anybody foreseeing you in that page? Because I, it's, it's a lot of people on those pictures, all the stuff I do in community, I, I didn't see me nowhere on there, but I, I see the same people and I see some people that ain't even commissioners on the pictures with the commissioners.
Yeah, I work with the city manager. We've, we've gone to many of the different commissioners' events. I've been to a few of yours and I could show you some of the videos and things that we've captured from your events, like community cleanups and different things that you've been able to do in the Fourth Ward. So yes, we've been able to, we've been able to highlight a lot of your, your work and along with other different community members' work as well, highlighting collaboration in the city.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Henderson.
Honorable Mayor, thank you, Mr. Gunn, for all of the work that you've been doing and I know I've seen you at many events, taking pictures and doing those kinds of things, but what I appreciate the most is telling the story. How you, how do we get the story of Benton Harbor out? It's through those pictures, through social media, and through telling the story because many times the stories that come out of Benton Harbor are negative. Much of the views are negative, people's ideas and thoughts about the, even the people who live here is often negative because the Herald Pollution does not always print the best information about the City of Benton Harbor and they always show up for the negative stories. So it's powerful what you're doing and I do appreciate the work that's going into that. And like Commissioner Henry stated, it is wearing our infantile with this and so this is the first time really that anybody or any organization, especially the city, is telling its own story. So I appreciate all of the work and you are at just about every event and things that's happening, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mayor Protim Seitz.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Just want to ask just a couple different questions, like, do you work for any other, I mean, this is not like a sole contract between the City of Benton Harbor...
Mayor Protim, that's, you got to be clear personnel questions.
Okay, let me say it like this. Then the other events that are posted on our website and other events that are posted by you, they're, they're not anything to do with the City of Benton Harbor. So do you disclose that you work for the City of Benton Harbor or do you work for other entities? Are you, I mean, you know, just a freelance, freelancing or, and I'm not saying that facetiously because when you do stuff for the city, it's government and then your office holds a presence in the city government, but are you also offering other opportunities to people to utilize what you do?
Yeah, I'm a, I'm an independent journalist and I'm independent, but I keep everything independent from work that I do outside from the city to work that I do for the city. I keep it completely separate and I do that for the same with every other place that I've worked with.
Thank you. Chair recognizes City Manager Little.
I'd like to say that Nick's doing a great job for us. I started this process June of last year because I noticed that we were running into so much misinformation, lack of information, lack of understanding. A lot of the things that the city's engaged in now, particularly the various projects and so forth, are tied to various grants or combinations of grants and whatnot and it became clear to me a lot of people did not understand it. We were limited in terms of how much money we had to work with and our budget and whatnot, so we worked out an arrangement with Mr. Gunn here to work as an independent contractor for us for a limited amount and with the understanding that if he wanted to work for some other people, if he could get arrangements with them, that would be okay as long as we kept a distinction between the city's part and, and the other parts. And it's worked out well. I direct and guide what's going to go up. I sat down with him in terms of providing factual information as to what's taking place, how it evolved and where it's going and that kind of thing, so that people are getting factual information about what the city is doing.
Thank you, Mr. Gunn. I do appreciate your hard work. I know that, are you still in school?
Yes.
Still in school?
Enter my senior year.
Senior year at Andrews.
In public relationship, in public relationship.
In public relations. And you did go to New York. Could you just talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, recently, last month, I went to New York, New York University and I was accepted into the Ed Bradley Journalism Fellowship. Yeah, thank you. So 20 other, along with 19 other black males from the universities from around, around the United States, from a pool of other applicants and we're able to work together and better understand the realm of journalism, public relations, and broadcasting. So that was, it was a great experience. I was able to meet with 60 Minutes, CNN, New York Times, and other different publications and just still be able to garner those connections currently and, and be able to, you know, if I have a question with some of the work that I'm doing, you know, how do I go about something? I have a pool of people to consult with and just learn more from, so it was, it was a pleasure.
Well, I appreciate it. You know, when I look at our social media page, I see transparency, I see education, I see information, and I see engagement with the residents. And, you know, I would just say as the mayor, thank you and I'm happy to, you know, be able to say that, you know, when you get where you're going, you know, that we helped, you know, get you started. So don't forget us.
Yeah, all right.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Representative Andrews, I understand is currently with United States Senator Slock and at a different meeting, so we're going to move forward with his update and this brings us to citizens' comments. There's a three-minute, three-minute maximum per speaker. Please sign in with the city clerk and she will call you according to the sign-in sheet. And please, can we power off our electronic devices just as a housekeeping to avoid further interruption during the meeting?
Yolanda Taylor.
Good evening, everybody. My, hello, my name is Yolanda Taylor. Stay at 563 McConister. My concern is last week's event that unfolded on my block. My friend had a party and the reason why I'm cutting because every year, this is, this be my third year that I, you know, that I usually have Friend and Family Day, but because of the construction, I prolonged it because I'm waiting on the dirt to move because of the activities that I do. But anyway, I encouraged my friend who has a similar thing every year, Friends and Family Day at her house, we stay right on the street from each other. I encouraged her to get a permit and on her night that she had her events, the first night, it was on occasion with Officer Oakley and he told her to turn down the music and get her crowd under control and she said, I do that and then he detained her. I don't want the same thing to happen to me. Me, McGinnis, me, you, exactly, you know, we, we dealt each other and I don't want the same incident because it was no problems. All our neighbors, I've been staying in my house for 17 years, no problems. I just don't, I, I don't, I don't quite get what went on and I, it, it just was ugly because it wasn't any violence, wasn't any problems. The problem that took place on Saturday was blocks away and before I, we knew it, my friend was being detained and it was a bunch of lies. I was right there the whole time, so a lot of things that came back to you, I don't know if that microphone works on Officer Oakley's suit, but, okay, wait, I was right there. So a lot of things that were said that came back, it wa, it wasn't true. So I don't want the same thing happen because my Friends and Family Day is coming up. So I don't want the same, I don't want the same thing, you know, it's never been a problem that 563 McConister now in the year. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Natasha Bowman.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Natasha Bowman. I am the resident that had the party on the 25th and 26th of July. I did get permission from Mr. McGinnis on the misunderstanding. With the time that was permitted, the party was supposed to be over at 11 o'clock is what Mr. Oakley told me on Friday night. When he came, he said, as long as I got the crowd under control and the people that were in the non-parking areas under control and the music turned down, that I would be able to continue as long as there was peace. As I walked off, I said, yes, sir, I can do that because you're not, I don't want my party to be over. As I said, I don't want my party to be over. He handcuffed me and detained me off of using those words, saying that I said I wouldn't end the party. I had no problem with turning down the music and getting everybody in my yard under control, but he detained me for two hours and then wrote me a ticket for disorderly person. I wasn't disorderly in any type of way. On Saturday night, we did carry on. The officer said that there were people outside of my yard that had red cups and alcohol. In my mind, I thought that that was something that he should get under control because I was in my yard with my company. You know how people kind of ride around and see something going on and they kind of let their selves, you know, kind of engage with those things? But on Saturday night, there was a shooting a block over and on, on Sunday, I'm telling my friends, you know, y'all reach out to the police, y'all email Mr. McGinnis and let Mr. McGinnis know that you were in a safe place, that nothing really happened at 176 Britton where I was permitted to have the party. There was a shooting around the corner, around the corner on Ohio that the police were called out to. Oakley came straight down Britton and arrested me. I went to jail, lodged in jail for... Ah. This, no, that disorderly, disorderly on, on Friday and then he did disturbing the peace on Saturday with a $100 bond, but there were no calls made to the 176 Britton where the party was permitted to have. There were no calls, there were no incidents, nothing. Everybody came out. My community is my family and friends. I've been here for 45 years. A lot of people know me, a lot of people know my family, so it did turn out to be a bigger crowd, but it was a good time. Everybody had a good time. Thank you so much for your permit, but I just wanted to come out to the city hall to see what's going on with the officer doing that to me when there were so many other things going on in the city. Calls were being made, other, other things needed to be taken care of and he detained me, arrested me the second night and took me to jail and didn't get to the shooting till two hours later after I had been booked, processed, and released from jail is when he was pulling up to the address at 471 Ohio. I have video of everything. So I'm just here today to clear my name of being responsible. I had somebody say something to one of the police officers about the shoot, about the night and they said, well, there was trouble, there was violence, there was a shooting due to that party, but my party was at 176 Britton. The shooting was around the corner on 471 Ohio and at, the actual bullet went through the window off of Kirby Street. Thank you so much for your time.
Deidra Fields.
My name is Deidra Fields. I'm here for a couple reasons. One, I want to piggyback off of the technology of the communications part that we had. I thought the presentation was great. Nick does awesome, an awesome job. I still feel that there is a need for a newsletter. I actually chatted with a couple of the seniors who we are advocating for a newsletter for. Asked them like, oh, do you know about Facebook? Have you, know what they're talking about? No. And so I still feel the newsletter is important, so I just want to throw that out there. And then, secondly, I wanted to inquire in regards to this conveying for a dollar of the land that Harbor Tower is on. And mind you, miraculously, my video of me going in there to state the issues and show the issues inside has been taken down from Facebook. But this RAD conversion process via HUD says that step one was for a RAD application and resident engagement. And so I'm asking if that part has happened and if not, why? So has the application been completed and at what point were the residents or will the residents be involved? And so I'm grateful for this information to be have brought forth because it had not necessarily been stated otherwise. And then just the information or details that would be in that document if we were to receive something to say, what would happen with residents, will they be housed? Like when they repaired and did the, the repairs in St. Joe, Hassel, which I was talking to a lot of people was, you know, waiting to see if maybe they will be the persons to do the removal of the clothing and the different things from the individuals' homes. And so I don't, one of the reasons I'm wanting for Commissioner Large to is because this isn't transparency. This isn't transparency, this isn't accountability and ideally, I would not necessarily have a problem with it if it was being done correctly. So at the last commission meeting, I said that, hey, my concern is just still for the residents and I can just see private sector somehow getting involved and it changes it all. So if we could have more information as residents, which is how it's supposed to start, that would be great. Thank you.
Hello, everybody knows me already. I speak up, I say what's on my mind and I want to speak the truth. I hope everybody for, it's, it's voting time tomorrow. I want to get the best people in there with wisdom and knowledge. I prayed on it. Personally, Gunn said, keep the ones that's already in there to help us, you know. Maybe some of you disagree or maybe some of you don't. Some of you I don't disagree with because some things I've seen, I don't, I don't agree with. I really don't agree with some, some of the things that I have seen. I would not vote for every, I've changed my vote for some people. Mayor Muhammad, you have my vote, Dr., um, Seitz, you have my vote. I'm just being honest. I'm just being honest. We got to get the people in here that's gonna really do something, okay? It's not about friendship. It's not about, um, I'm your cousin. It's time out for that. We need people with brain, okay? Knowledge, wisdom, understanding. They know how to run this place. That's what we need. We get to bring people in here, it's gonna be a problem. A big problem. And then we gonna be complaining again. You want to know what's going on? Come up to the meeting, come to the meetings. I said over and over again, I'm gonna stand my ground. For all your children, the mothers need to stand up. I was sitting in my car the other day, there was a shootout. My faith is in God. Man, blood hit me. I'm sorry of God. I want to do right. That's how God keep me. He kept me. I gave my testimony at church. I want to do right. I want to see the Ben Harbor do right. I'm not for no underhanded stuff. Ain't nobody gonna get me to do nothing. Because see, that, that gonna mess me up with God. I want my prayers answered. Thank you.
Vera Jackson. Victor Wright. Lisa Robinson.
Hello, city of Ben Harbor. I'm a homeowner in Ben Harbor on Herb Street. And I have a problem with Sunday mornings when I'm on my way to church and from church with all this glass broken. Do we have any city workers anywhere in the city of Ben Harbor? That's all I'm asking. My voice is shaking because it's, it hurts to see the city just go down the drain. I was born and raised here. The, 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 the part where the water should drain. I've walked out of my house with a yard broom and a dustpan and cleaned those out myself. I have, after I had Sunday dinner, I have went down on Herb Street and swept the glass. It was glass on East May, it was glass on Herb Street, it was glass on Will. Where's our city workers at? I thank y'all for coming down my street when, when the snow gets real high and I can get out of my driveway and go to work. But where's our city workers at? Don't, so I just sit here talking, y'all just listen. Oh, that's how this go. Oh, okay. I'm done.
Deborah Lee.
I'm back again with the same problem. Right after I was here the last time, they did a little something with the dollar rides with the air. They're back not working again. You got three or four buses out, five, that the air is not working. It's not fair to the passengers, it's not fair to the drivers. I'd like to know what can be done about that. Does somebody have to get sick? Before something's done? I live here. I ride them from time to time. That's not comfortable. They're not that big. And the air is either working in the front, it's not working in the back where the passengers are, or vice versa. I'd like to know what can be done about that. They've got new ones? You see maybe two or three of them. They could have left them new ones only like where they got them from if they not gonna put them out on the street. Can anybody tell me? What can be done about it?
So the Ben Harbor Dollar Ride, um, is a separate governing body. They have a board, they have an executive director, and they have their own meetings.
I've been to them.
So those questions would have to be directed to the governing body for the Dollar Ride. We don't govern the Dollar Ride.
So talking to you won't do any good about the Dollar Ride.
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's the same with the Ben Harbor Housing Commission as well. So for those who have questions regarding the Ben Harbor Housing Commission, Harbor Towers, bus projects, it's a separate board, they have their own executive director, they have their own staff, and those questions would have to be directed to the Ben Harbor Housing Commission. Point of order, please. This is, if you got comments, please sign in with the city clerk, please.
Mary Alice Adams.
Thank you and good evening, my fellow elected officials and Ben Harbor City residents. It's been a while since I've been down. And I'm glad that I, I did come and I, I, everything just shifted. The whole atmosphere just shifted with the complaints that I heard. Because when I came back to Ben Harbor back in 98, I, I, I had to ride the Dollar Ride. And not only that, I got a lot of the complaints that I'm hearing now and so many more. And it encouraged me. The residents told me to come down here and see what was going on. And I did exactly what y'all are doing right now. What I found out was that the city didn't have any money and a whole lot of problems. What I found out was how my government worked. It took me 10 years to study papers and to go into documents to see how things work and how we got to where we were and why the city was falling apart and not coming up. So I decided to get involved instead of standing back and being a part of the problem and complaining, getting in where I can fit in and try to make a difference. Guess what? That's exactly what I did. And I have spearheaded along with some of these great elected officials that finally gave approval. I mean, we might, it, it might seem like it's fighting the y'all, but everybody have their own ideas on how to do a thing or how to create a thing to generate some money that we don't have. We have businesses, we have roads being fixed. The how, I'd had no idea that there were separate committees and stuff that people need to be filling on. Sit on these boards and help make the decisions that need to be made. I beg y'all, the last times that I've run for office, please come get involved. When I call you, I need you, that means show up. And we need to be showing up like this more often. Yes, there's an election tomorrow and I'm running for office. And the only reason I missed the last time was because I got sick.
You can't, we can't.
But I, 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 I'm not an elected official, but I have been sitting on the planning commission, zoning, steadily working for my city even in my sickness because I love Ben Harbor. I don't want to have to move to Miami or anywhere else. I love my people. Because we all in the same boat for growth and it's happening. We have done some things that haven't even come to fruition yet. And even though those are different entities with Housing Commission, Dollar Ride Board, Brownfield Authority, all of those that govern themselves, they bring the problems to the city commission. And then we voice ours to the higher officials and we've landed millions of dollars to fix our, our housing peo-
Thank you.
Pastor Maurice McAfee.
We first like to say good evening to each and every one of you and thank you for this opportunity. First, let me state our cases. I think first of all, as a church, we've tried to be a positive asset to the city of Ben Harbor, uh, even before we brought property into the city of Ben Harbor. We've always tried to follow the motto of what we've always done and that is put people first. It just seems that as though that since we've become engaged with the city of Ben Harbor, it seemed like we've been met with so much resistance. It seems to be a double standard for certain things or doing certain people if you kiss the ring. Uh, we discovered this when the Water Distribution Center started for COVID. They said we couldn't be a part of it because we weren't in the city. But yet two churches from Ben Township end up being in the water distribution. No big deal for us. We weren't in it for the money, we was in it to help people. So what did we do? We bought over a thousand cases of water and went to pilgrim rest and did it. Our church said, Pastor, let's do more. So we bought a building, uh, on 121 Klein to try to put a home, a warming center in the community only to get a $3,700 water bill from being unoccupied. And the six months that we occupied it, we got a $700 water bill that nobody can still explain to me how an unoccupied building gets a $3,700 water bill and an occupied water building only gets a $700 water bill. It just seems to us that it's been one thing after the other. Uh, our church was red tagged with the guys that you was gonna inspect all new businesses and all churches. I've called my comrades, I'm the only one that's been inspected, I'm the only one that's had them come out and do these things. So it just seems to me that you would want to build a relationship with somebody who try to be positive in this city. You ask where the church is, we show up, we stand up, we get resistance and get pushed back. The same place that I fed the homeless last Thursday before they start sending people over there, I don't mind following the rules, let me know what they are. But I can't see one group's doing it and don't have no license on Sunday and then you want to come talk to me about the same thing. We won't lay down and we won't be rolled over. We'll follow the rules, we'll do exactly what we're supposed to do, but we need to know what the rules are. And the rules can't keep changing. It can't change for one church and then change for another church. We are committed to making sure we get in these seats. We ain't come to make no threats because y'all, I'd rather be outside doing what I do best and that's taking care of God's business and his people. But I won't shy away from coming here and expo, and expressing our displeasure. We came to here as a church tonight to show you that we're not happy with the way we perceive that we've been treated from this business from day one. We will not rest until it's corrected. We will not rest until other residents are treated properly and fairly because if you're doing it to us, and I know I got a mouth, I know what you're doing to people who won't speak up. So at the end of the day, uh, the same place that we fed last Thursday is the same place we passed our 500 Thanksgiving baskets and nobody had a problem with it.
Cassandra Booker.
Um, good evening, everyone. Cassandra Booker, stakeholder, 352 Lincoln Street. As I sit here and hear, um, this young lady, Natasha Bowman, talk about how she was harassed and arrested and detained in regards to having a party which is considered to be a nuisance. My question is, what is, how do we determine, um, the priority or the severity of a nuisance? Because the city lots that's overgrown, looking like a jungle, that's a nuisance. And I have a problem with it. I have a problem with that. I'm, I'm a taxpayer, I pay penny, plenty of taxes. I have 11 lots in a commercial building. I pay plenty of taxes. And it's unfair for residents to be put on the bottom of the totem pole, just to be disregarded. We allow, some residents do like their yards to look nice. We do like our stuff to look nice. We should not have to be staying next to or owning anything next to city lots that haven't been cut this year. So I'm, I want to, I'm, I'm trying to figure out why it, why the lots haven't been cut if the city can't afford to cut them. I try, for instance, I, I rehabbed the property at 216 West Empire Avenue, put tons of money in it, re-beautified it as I do all my properties and not even just coming down here to complain. I've sown into the community, I've shown what I can do. I've gone above and beyond in my opinion. Um, I've never got a, 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 um, I've never been cited for 11 lots that I own. I keep my, I maintain my properties. So I sold the property at 216 West Empire. This man moved from Coloma, you, we, we say we want to bring people here, we want to put property taxes back on the tax roll, we want the city to make money, we want to bring, um, accounts to utilities. This man moved from Coloma, a veteran. He didn't have to come to the city of Ben Harbor. He paid $175,000 for his home. And I ride past there every day and I'm embarrassed because there's a lot next to him that I tried to purchase and I couldn't purchase. And I understand you guys have a moratorium on the properties. I'm still trying to understand what's the plan? If you can't afford to maintain them, sell them. If you know that you have someone that want to purchase them that hasn't ever been cited, you can look, look at people credentials. Stop just always putting everybody in just having one idea or you put everybody in one boat. If I have 11 lots, I've never been cited, I maintain them, why wouldn't you sell me a lot? I'm not going to buy the lot and not maintain it, I'm proving that I will. So, I mean, we got to be more realistic in regards to how we think instead of being so shallow and close-minded. Maybe we need more innovative people, I don't know. Are you guys okay with the lots looking like? Everybody ride around here all day. We got four commissioners in the war, we got commissioners at large. Nobody got a problem with the lots looking like a jungle? I don't understand it. I, I just don't get it. Like those are things that we can actually touch. Those are tangible. And I know it's a lot going on here, but let's tackle what we can put our hand on today. We got cars still, we supposed to have this whole big blight program where it's gonna be aggressive. We still got cars everywhere on the street. I mean, we start everything and we finish nothing. Period.
No more comments.
Thank you. This brings us to our first, or our consent calendar items. Is there a motion for the approval of the consent calendar or the items that should be separated? Who chair recognizes Commissioner Clark Griffin?
I would like to separate number two.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Henry.
Duly noted. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion is made by Mayor Pro Tem Seats.
Support.
It is supported by Commissioner Isom, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Pro Tem Seats?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Griffin?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry? Commissioner Isom?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennard? Mayor Mohammed?
Yes.
Motion carried.
This brings us to the next item on the agenda. The first separated item is a resolution to convey the property at 200, 250 East Wall Street to Ben Harbor Housing Commission. Is there a motion for the approval?
Motion for approval.
Support.
Motion is made by Commissioner Isom. It is supported by Mayor Pro Tem Seats. And before we begin discussion, I'm going to read the memo. Items before the commission, a resolution to convey the property to, at 250 East Wall Street, parcel number 115211500055019 to the Ben Harbor Housing Commission. The recommendation, the Ben Harbor City Commission conveys the property at 250 East Wall Street to the Ben Harbor Housing Commission for consideration of $1. Justification, the city currently owns the land at 250 East Wall Street where Harbor Towers is located. The building is owned by the Ben Harbor Housing Commission, which is an entity of the city. The Ben Harbor Housing Commission is seeking funding through the HUD-approved RAD program to rehab the Harbor Towers building. And in order to clear up the title so that the Housing Commission has full ownership and therefore meets the requirements for RAD, it is in the best interest of the city to convey the property to the Housing Commission for consideration of $1. The financial impact, the purchaser will pay the city $1 for the parcel. Any other costs associated with obtaining ownership will be the responsibility of the purchaser. If we could have everyone please, um, cease and desist side conversations. The resolution reads as follows. Whereas the city owns the land at 250 East Wall Street where Harbor Towers is located, and whereas the Ben Harbor Housing Commission is an entity of the city and owns the Harbor Towers building, whereas the Ben Harbor Housing Commission is seeking funding through the HUD-approved RAD program to rehab the Harbor Towers building. And whereas in order to clear up the title and allow the Housing Commission to obtain full ownership of the parcel to meet- full ownership of the parcel to meet the requirements of RAD funding, it is in the best interest of the city to convey the parcel to the Benton Harbor Housing Commission and whereas the purchaser will pay the city $1 and any other costs associated with obtaining ownership will be the responsibility of the Benton Harbor Housing Commission. Now therefore be it resolved that the Benton Harbor City Commission hereby conveys to property at 250 East Wall Street to the Benton Harbor Housing Commission for the consideration of $1. Is there discussion? Chair recognizes Commissioner Clark Griffin.
There is so much wrong that I see with this. I don't even know where to start, but I'mma, I'mma, I'mma lay out some facts and I'mma try to sum it up as quick as I can, even though I don't have a time limit. Um, first of all, this is a home rule. We home rule. So our job is to make sure that people home have quality, especially for the seniors, the low income and the moderate income. So I have a problem with this because I know about 20 years that I've been here and Harbor Towers been having issues. And then one after another, we say we gonna do this, do that and nothing happened. On February the 3rd, 2025, we were approved and granted, we voted, approved and granted for a grant through Mr. for a 400, $440,000 house, house rehabilitation. Excuse me, I hear some talking. I can hardly talk on that end. Thank you. Um, I didn't hear anything else about that money. We approved it. It was supposed to be executed the day of, for a signature, the day of February the 14th. Neighborhood 2.0 project. Haven't heard anything else, but we, we, we voted. It was accepted and granted. Now that's HUD. Now they saying let's sell Harbor Tower for a dollar. Now, I know we was supposed to be $2 million or something in the deficit, but since then we done bought, I think it was 19 homes originally. Now we wanna sell the house for a dollar. We going back to emergency manager, right? I thought we was trying to get away from that. Well, he selling homes to my knowledge for a dollar. So now we wanna sell it for a dollar. Okay, and then HUD, let's talk about HUD, saying for HUD approval, the RAD, which is rental assistance demo- demonstration. Okay, it's called, you can look it up, called the RAD conversion. Now, before RAD application notice must be delivered to residents and other PHA must hold at least two meetings. It's called the RAD information notice. I know for a fact, none of that has happened. None of that has happened. Okay, then we talk about, uh, we was supposed to be selling to the Benton Harbor Housing. Now then, all we got was, it was great. Over dollars pretty much, well, you remember with the resolution, right? Didn't give a detail, didn't tell us how long the process. I, can y'all hear me? Yes, I supposed to be old, but I know I can speak, well, you guys can hear me. Um, it didn't say how long the process would be 'cause that process, you read the RAD conversion, it can take a while. It can take a while and it, it didn't tell us how long these people would be displaced, the residents. It didn't tell no details. But on July the 23rd, at the Planning Economic Committee meeting, city manager was telling a lot of details, lot of details would have been great for us to have. Um, also, uh, on July the 25th, in the newspaper, it said, the city manager said it was set up, it was, it would be able to, they would be able, Benton Harbor House Commission, it would be able to set up a low, a legal process to allow private developer, private developer to take minority ownership portion and then invest private money with a 15-year period. It also said, a nonprofit with the same members as the housing commission will be set up to own Harbor Towers.
Who's gonna take professional Harbor Towers? Who are we selling to? Private investor? Nonprofit? Are we selling to the non-housing wish? He says, I don't forgive. I heard that they wanted to make that condo, convention. So then these people aren't gonna be displaced, you don't say how long? And, and as far as the, I don't know, they said it in June 25th, where he said about private investors, non-profits and so forth. So I deny your good conscience.
Hope for this. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mayor Pro Tem Seats.
Ah, you honorable mayor, um, I, I just really want y'all to clear y'all mind really of, nobody's selling Harbor Towers. That's not happening. That's, that's, that's a fallacy. That, that's so fictitious. And I hate to say that publicly because I don't want y'all to leave here saying that somebody is selling Harbor Towers. That's not what's happening. We're getting 50, we getting $50 million to improve the living conditions for the people of Harbor Towers who, well, AM bus projects. We're getting $50 million. We've been complaining about the living conditions of Harbor Towers for years. They can't get down the elevators. They pissing in the elevators. They can't, they got bear bugs, roaches. It has not been improved. All kind of things are happening. So if you say no, then you're really saying no to them having better living conditions. That's what's hap- we're not selling it. We're not saying Benton Harbor Housing Commission, they're, they have it. They're taking it over. They have it already, but it's just house cleaning, just like when you have bus projects, vineyard projects. We don't oversee that. They oversee it. Hey, what wells? And so what happens is, I'll explain it to you because some of us might not have bought anything in our lifetime. What happens is they have tax credits. No, I'm serious. I'm talking about apartment buildings and whether you like it or not, it's true.
Order, please. Hold on, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. So.
They take tax credits.
Hold on, hold on one second 'cause we gotta have order in the chambers. The public was allowed to speak. Now it's time for agenda items and discussion from the council. So while somebody is speaking, please give them a res- the respect of a government business meeting. We gave the public an opportunity and even on the council. While somebody is speaking, we don't need sidebar conversations. Give them the dignity and the respect for having the floor. You may proceed, sir.
So Bishop Nathaniel Wells, when he built Kojic Village, he went and got tax credit, which was private sector money that they go and purchase, just like you do a 401K, anything else. They purchase tax credits to build these entities and then the entities take the money and rebuild. That's what's happening. Nobody's selling property. Nobody's giving anything away. Nobody, and part of the $50 million is to put them in hotels. Is to put them in a place to stay during the time that they're gonna be displaced and their property's gonna be improved. I'm talking about the building right there, Harbor Towers behind us. But if you don't know, then you assume that we stealing, what we need to do is find out why we only got one minority contractor that's working right now to do painting and nothing else. So you deny them better living conditions by saying somebody's doing something wrong when it's not wrong. They need a better improvement at this property. Harbor Towers, we have complained about it for years. It's been in the paper for years and it's time to do something about it and nobody is selling that property. But people will go with a misnomer and say, so the turnover, let's talk about that. The turnover in Harbor Towers, that people are displaced, the murders, the killings, people getting evicted, the people that are squatting, the people that are doing all kinds of things and it's, it's documented. It's in the court system. What are we gonna do? Until we improve the conditions for the people, then we can't complain. But they, do they deserve better bedrooms? Yeah. Do they deserve better kitchens? Yeah. Do they deserve a, a, a $30 million better living quarters and facilities? Yeah. But if you say no, then what are you gonna do? What, what's the opposite? So we say no to $30 million, then, then anybody else got $3 million, $2 million, $1 million? Anything to help them over there? No. So what, what, what's, what's the alternative? If you say no to $30 million for them, $20 million for bus, then what's the alternative? Nobody talking about that. I would rather prepare our people, tell them to go get licensed to paint, rebuild, do whatever, 'cause the freebies are over. Trump in office. You want free juice, free clothes, all that? You don't, they don't need that. What they need is a J O B. And if they, if you can get somebody who's ready to work, then they can be a part of these projects and better their lifestyle for their families, for the community and move forward. But the misnomer that this is something, a steal or takeover, why don't you go down the street and look at the corner wall in Colfax? And see how many of us are working down there? That's where we need to get to, where we working, not where we talking, 'cause this, all this is fluff and bull. And I'm saying that it's, it's, it's fluff. Nobody's, you think that, that these people in this building, that crazy? I'm done. And selling a piece of property that big for a dollar? We gonna do that for a dollar? And if you believe that, then I got another property I'll sell you for $10.
Mr. Manager, could you please provide just some clarity, um, and education on this issue, please?
Certainly, Mayor. The RAD program is a HUD-sponsored program that's incorporated in the legislation that was passed by Congress and approved by HUD and put in regulations. It's being used all over the United States. What it basically is, is a recognition by HUD that the way they've tried to do a lot of this in the past, they didn't have enough money and it didn't entirely do the job that they needed done. So it's been made available to housing commissions and housing authorities all over the United States. It's being used everywhere. What's taking place in this situation so that you understand? In fact, it comes back to something I said earlier when we were talking about the media information we put out. And I said to you then, these pros- these processes and projects are very complex and it takes more than just two sentences to explain them. Now, what's happening? The building here at Harbor Towers is owned by HUD and turned over to the Housing Commission to operate.
Mr. Manager, could you, who is HUD?
The Department of Housing and Urban Development, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Now, the land that that's on is still in the name of the city of Benton Harbor, although the housing commission actually has possession of it and has had for many years, ever since that building was put on it. What is occurring, and when the city started the housing commission, what it did, it didn't turn over title to the land, it just made it available. And so it was built on, accomplished a purpose, say, we're trying to do. The same thing with bus projects. City actually owns the land and the buildings. But now for this process, it's the first time in all these years that something has come up in these programs where it actually requires them to have title to the property. And so that's what's coming up. The program that was being partially described is one in which to use this program following HUD's guidelines and all of the things that were mentioned will occur. Some already have and are in the process. The citizen engagement, the participation and all of that kind of thing, relocation. Uh, HUD regulations have had relocation requirements in them for the last 50 years. Uh, so that will be taken care of in it. But essentially, they create a nonprofit entity that will be identical to the Housing Commission Board. That entity will hold title to the properties that are turned over to the Housing Commission. The city still has its connection to it because the city appoints the members of the Housing Commission Board. And consequently, we'll also be appointing those people who will serve on this nonprofit entity to look after the public purpose. Now, they then will, and it's part of, uh, the request for proposal process that's being developed that will go out across the nation for developers, whoever to participate in. They hired some several months ago, uh, consultants and so forth that have the expertise in working on these pr- programs, that are working with them to put all of this together. Once they have that nonprofit entity set up, once they have title to the property where they can then put out an RFP that essentially will offer the opportunity for a private developer to take up to a 49% interest in the property for no more than 15 years. They will then invest in this property in addition to the money that's being made available by HUD to do the complete renovation of these properties to make and improve the quality of life for the people that live in these, in these residents. The same thing will have to occur at a later point with bus projects for the same reasons. And as a consequence, the HUD money will leverage the additional private money that will come into this city to redo these homes and make them really nice for people with new, um, uh, uh, equipment in them, new stoves, refrigerators and so forth, bathrooms, everything. Uh, that's what, that's what this program is about and that's why the city is doing what it's doing. It's not losing a thing. They already have possession of the land underneath Harbor Towers and there's nothing else that can be done with it.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Canard.
Thank you, Mayor. I've already wasted told a whole lot of excuses with a lot of words wrapped up in a line. Now, we already spoke of private developer, hearing the conversation and all. I'm an agreement, Commissioner, a agreement. It's already a whole lot of words and sometimes trying to follow what they're talking about and they lose you because you get so tired because of them. And you're not even able to follow it from one point to the other. So I'm sick and tired of hearing excuses because excuses for years, been nothing but a lot of words wrapped up in a line. So transparency is what you're all looking for and you're looking for us as commissioners. You all are out of bounds. We spoke being controlled of what's going on in the city by having clear as to what the commissioner, of what the city manager is doing. Sometimes we don't know hardly anything until it hits the newspaper or whatever. So be clear on getting people to give you a clear answer and not tell you to follow their orders because they know everything, because they don't. We don't get the information sometimes to the last minute and have a clear understanding of it, we don't have it. And they gonna, they say they been selling, but they, they said they sold it for a dollar. They said you selling for, you're kidding, you still sold it. So now, give us the real thing that's going on here. These people can be displaced. They don't, it's nothing in their paperwork that said these same people that are being displaced is gonna get their places back. So now what do you do about those people? We got a lot of homeless people already. We got a lot of homeless people already. So I just keep coming. And I hear each neighbor, one of them. But it's just a few of us. We can be outvoted if it's two or three that wanna work on your behalf. You got the other portion that is not voting on your behalf. So please listen and be clear in understanding that. A lot of things that we have gone that has gone over our head for years. Things that has been done in this community for years. Things that we hear different one of you all come and talk to me. I have to garner many times you all come and talk to me about the problems that you have here. And I know that has come before the commission, before anything is acted on. So please keep coming and voice your opinion. I hear it best. What's done for one should be appropriate for the next one. Why tell another one that they can't have certain things, but then you let the next one? Is there money under the table that's been passed or what? So ask the questions too, just like they wanna put something on you, push it back. Keep coming.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I would say, as many of the commissioners have spoken, it's important to get an understanding when we're dealing with these kinds of things. We have several projects that are happening specifically, and I'll speak about the one that's happening at the hospital. That project has been two years in the in a process to get developed. We started this process almost three years ago, and finally, we're two years here at this particular project. So just because we passed monies two years ago doesn't mean those things happen immediately. They take time. And with this particular project, this is one of the best things that could have happened. As many of you know, we've been dealing with this particular apartment complex. It's been like that for years. My mom lived in that in that building. And it is is terrible, and it's an opportunity to give the residents that live in that building a better living space. Um, and I'll say for any commissioner, please speak for yourself, because we all have an opportunity to go sit down in the manager's office. He set up meetings where we can go and sit down and ask any question that we need to ask before our meetings begin. We can go ask him anything, we can get an understanding about anything we like before we get to this meeting. So you don't see a lot of questions being asked or allegations thrown out because we've gotten those answers and an understanding. A lot of it is complex, and it is to not you're not able to understand that in a committee meeting. But with each one of us has an opportunity to go sit in that office, to meet with the manager, to get an understanding about what we're voting on, what this mean, what this plot mean, what that means, what this means. We have that opportunity. And so some people don't, and so you can continue to be skeptical about what's going on. But in this role, I'll say buyer beware, because you you in this role, and you see a lot of information. You get to um be on the inside of that, and you see all of that. And it's hard sometimes to convey all of that technical data to the to the um community.
Because it is a lot of information.
He sat there and gave a lot of information that we've heard and had the opportunity to sit and talk with him, so you wouldn't understand all of that information in this meeting. It is technical and the way that it's explained. And so the committee meetings is an opportunity to do that. But I will say this, ain't nobody taking nothing. All we've been trying to do is improve this city. Since I've been here for fifty years or more, there has been no infrastructure, no things like that happening in the city up until the last five or six years. So it has been complex. We've gotten all this money for a lot of different reasons, and now we're able to do the work that is needed to be done. And there's still much more to be done. But we are doing what we need to do to improve the city for for the residents. We used to get calls, I used to get calls about people busting their tires riding down the street. And I want the city to pay for my tire and file an insurance claims. Now we're fixing the roads that hadn't been fixed in years. Nobody thought about it or didn't have the money to do so. Change takes time, and it takes resources, as Commissioner, former Commissioner Adams talked about. And if you ain't got the resources, there are some things that you can't do or it takes time. And as far as us riding around the city, we see how the city looks. I make calls, emails all the time, all day. But I don't convey that here because it's not the proper place to do that. But behind the scenes, yeah, we we do a lot of stuff behind the scenes. It ain't on Facebook, it ain't on, you know, it's the behind the scenes stuff that happens. Of course, we make calls. Of course, we call the city manager and the staff, why why is this looking like this? Why y'all doing this or or not doing this? We do those kinds of things, but it's hard to convey that, and we shouldn't in public um to our staff who's doing the best job that they can. So listen, but listen with intentional ears to hear the truth of what is happening in the city. Everybody has motives, and as somebody just stated, it is an election season. And again, I'll say buyer beware with that when it comes to that, because it ain't what it looks like all the time. So thank you for hearing that, but that's the truth of the matter.
Mister Manager.
I'd like to close by saying, first off, the mayor made the point earlier this in this meeting. Housing Authority, while the city appoints commissioners, is a separate entity. They meet every Thursday, every third Thursday of the month at ten o'clock. You can go there and ask them all the questions you wanna ask, find out all the information about this that you want, because this is their program. I'm only answering what I had to get into to be able to assist them and to answer the questions for the city. All we're doing is transfer entitled to that property to enable them to do the rest of what they're doing. About six, eight months ago, Mayor and some of the commissioners and myself, we met with Housing Commission, asking them to take action to improve the conditions for the residents at Harbor Towers and and the other housing authority properties. Because there was so many, last year, if you recall, there was a a freeze where the power went out. Water ran down through the building and mold in the building and that type of thing. And it happened, something like that happened a year before in the winter. We've asked them, and they are responding by trying to do what they can to improve the property for the conditions that people live in it. So fifty-one percent owned by the Housing Authority, forty-nine percent for fifteen years to be owned by that private developer, putting his money in and getting the job done. Better quality of life for the people that live there, and they'll be taken care of through the processes that HUD sets up in their regulations.
Mayor Potem Seats.
You, Honorable Mayor, I just really want to dispel just the the rumor that people will be homeless. They're not, they're gonna put them in hotels. There's multi millions of dollars even for residents that are going through the lead program. They're being put in hotels. Mayor, you went to Washington, D.C. and helped garner this money to help improve the quality for living for people down in Harbor Towers. I mean, this is this is this is astronomical. I mean, this this is this is and I I just don't understand how you're getting thirty million dollars to improve Harbor Towers and so. Ms. Hudson is here tonight who have worked hands. She's worked hard to try to get development at the Mercy Center. She put everything she had in it to come back to Benton Harbor, because they were they were going down the Bridgeman and building. And if I'm lying, she can check me up right now. They didn't wanna come to Benton Harbor and build nothing. And she came back to Benton Harbor to do Project T, which is a multi million dollar development.
Commissioner, I'm gonna stay focused on.
I'm staying focused on this.
Yeah, because I like to.
But what I'm saying.
Of the day.
Can I can I can I say this?
From the agenda.
People vote no on major multi million dollar developments would be the first one there to take a picture and cut a ribbon. And that's the truth.
Come on, we gotta stay.
And I'm standing right there on it.
On the item that.
But don't vote no to improve Harbor Towers to be in there telling them that you trying to do something good for them. Harbor Towers needs help. They need help now, not tomorrow, not three years from now. They need help now. And you would not want any of your family members living in that kind of condition and stand there and saying no to multi millions of dollars. Wouldn't Benton Harbor had the ability to say no to multi millions of dollars being invested in improving a living condition? So thank you. I I'm voting yes, and I hope everybody else will will vote yes to help the residents in the city of Benton Harbor, because everything ain't free.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Henry.
Thank you, Mayor. I see this as a transparency issue. The city manager explained some things in committee meeting, but he just went way further than he ever went in this meeting and told us some things that I wasn't aware of. Uh, so if you look at our previous history and you don't know where we came from, we will repeat some of the same stuff. I can take you back to Vineyard Project and what happened there. Now, I did look up that RAD program. It seemed to be a good program that if the powers that be, and that would be the Benton Harbor Commission Board that is appointed by the commission, if they do the right thing for the people. But if nobody's watching and nobody's paying attention, what happened to the Vineyard residents will happen to Harbor Towers, the Bus Avenue Project. If you go to other municipalities and see the process that happened to them, that's the same thing could happen to Benton Harbor. So my problem with government is they're not giving us a lot of information about this. And to be a conscientious elected official, you need to know certain things. First time I heard him say for fifteen years today, if that had came out in a question or 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 just knowledgeable information, that might have changed a lot of people's thought about it. RAD is a good program, but if we don't get the right people on the on the Housing Commission, and if you go back to the history of the Housing Commission, there's some serious, serious problems. So we might be trying to do something right with the wrong people. And that'll be on the mayor and the rest of us elected officials as to who, how we run that board, because right now, it is not being run right. There's nepotism, there's all sorts of problems. So that's my solution is some of this problem. If you let them have this opportunity, will it be an opportunity for the residents or will it be an opportunity for them? You look at the Housing Commission, go to the meeting, you go to yourself. It should be it should be held in this room, so it will be on YouTube and you can see it. You'll see who the players are and what they're saying. And if you ever go and talk to somebody that went that lived in the Vineyard Project before they turned into whatever the name of it is now, you'll see a big problem. So we're gonna fix it. So I don't know if I can say this or not, but it seemed like everybody else talking about the election. So I wanna talk about it too.
Point of order, Commissioner. Please.
Did you say that when?
Yes, I did.
Did you? Did he stop? Did he stop? Did he stop?
Commissioner Henry.
Did he?
You know, I mean, you already know it's a misdemeanor to to campaign in a public building.
Did you?
Once you but once you say say vote, yes, I did. Yes, I did.
Did he stop?
Point of order, I never said nothing about a election.
Order, Commissioner, we we should be we should be voting.
Never said nothing about election.
Point of order, please.
On a personal privilege.
This is on YouTube for those that are um carrying on. Uh, I do wanna speak on this particular item. So the housing, y'all just just won't won't respect. And it's embarrassing, really. So the Housing and Urban Development is a federal government program. They have rules, they have regulations. And the Housing and Urban Development Program is birthed out of the federal government, and they allow for municipalities to have a housing commission. But it goes through the city. So every year, the mayor's office, I have to sign the money from the federal government. So the Benton Harbor Housing Commission can operate. The Benton Harbor Housing Commission is the largest landlord in the city of Benton Harbor. Harbor Towers was built in the sixties, and it is in terrible shape. I took Congressman Bill Hisinga, first time ever, a sitting congressman toured Harbor Towers. And he was appalled. He went back to Washington, contacted at that time the Housing and and Urban Development Director, uh, former mayor of Cleveland, her name escapes me, and they sent somebody in, and they began to investigate Harbor Towers. And the recommendation, not from the city commission, the recommendation from the federal government was that the Benton Harbor Housing Commission enter into a RAD program where so much of the money will be put up by the federal government, and so much of the money will be put up by a private investor. And there's rules and regulations for RAD, where one part is forty-nine percent ownership, the Housing Commission retains the majority ownership, which keeps the power in the property in the hands of the people. And the private, there's a sunset on theirs, but nobody is going to put up untold millions of dollars without any collateral. So the the city of Benton Harbor, we have an interest in the property. We don't own the property. We have an interest in the property. So by allowing for it to be purchased by the Housing Commission, not by a private investor, by the Housing Commission, who is fifty-one percent owner, the title is cleared, which will allow for the Housing Commission to enter into an agreement per the federal government to receive approximately twenty-eight million dollars to renovate Harbor Towers. The estimated amount for bus projects is thirty-two million. And some say, well, why don't they just build it from the ground up? The federal government is providing the money, and we can't dictate to the federal government. We don't want the money for renovation. We want the money to build from the ground up. It don't work like that. So my goal is to make sure that the living conditions of the people at Harbor Towers and Bus Project is improved. Is everything perfect? No. But if you look and see where the current administration is clawing back federal money, where twenty million dollars that was supposed to go toward the renovation of the Army is gone. We're fighting in court. But if we're fighting here and fighting there as opposed to doing the things necessary to acquire the money, then the people that's living in those conditions, nothing happens. So the people have protested, which is agitation, which is good. But if your agitation don't lead to legislation, then your protest means nothing. So tonight is time to legislate so they can move forward and we can get the money. And that's why you are important to show up at the Benton Harbor Housing Commission meetings, show up at these meetings as the chief shareholder. meetings, show up at these meetings, as the chief shareholder and stakeholder to make sure that we doing it right and make sure they doing it right. But if we, if that don't happen, then you know what they say. What's the saying? When the cat is away, the mouse will play. So, we need you, just like you need us. So, let's work together, for lack of a better example. But we need you to be involved. We need you to be at the meetings, and the Housing Commission will do their part, but tonight, we do our part. But if we say no, then it's no way that we can acquire the money, because there's no way that the Housing Commission can go into an agreement per the federal regulations. So, I call for the question.
Mayor Protem Seitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Griffin?
No.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
To the chair and the clerk, the full comment that Mr. Little, our city manager, said, will those words be in the resolution?
You're voting on the resolution that's being presented.
Then my answer is no.
Commissioner Isom?
Yes.
Commissioner Canard?
No.
Mayor Muhammad?
Yes.
Motion carried.
This brings us to approval of city manager's emergency steps to get the water treatment plant's roof repaired to prevent further damage. Is there a motion for the approval?
Motion for approval?
Motion is made by Commissioner Isom. Is there support? It's supported by Mayor Protem Seitz. Is there discussion? The chair recognizes Commissioner Henry. We can't hear you.
We get more information about the roof at the water plant. Uh, this is the first time I've heard that there was damage to it, uh, so I need to have more information about. And, um, damage to the roof.
Chair recognizes city manager Little.
Thank you, Mayor. The problem with the roof at the water plant started a number of months ago. As you know, that plant sits right on Lake Michigan, and the, when you get high winds coming across the lake and storms and so forth, that's one of the very first buildings in Benton Harbor that gets hit. When we noticed a problem, um, several months ago, when it started to ripen loose, we immediately got the engineers to go up, take a look at it, see what we could do to try to contain the damage. We put tarps and stuff down to try to prevent more, but when we get real powerful storms, it does big damage. I take care of different things and problems that come up, uh, within the city every day, and most of them, we just do them. We don't talk about them or whatever. But because this one is going to involve a considerable amount of money, $64,000 to do the repairs on it, I thought it best to go ahead and put this out and have a discussion, make you aware of everything involved in it. I immediately, as we saw it getting worse and ripping off, uh, got ahold of the insurance company, asked them to take a look and said, "We've got to do something immediately to try and contain this damage." So, we went up, did temporary repairs and so forth. The insurance company has actually already advanced a check for $42,000 to us, uh, that we have in hand. Uh, and ordinarily, that balance of about $20,000 would fall on the general fund. Fortunately, the timing on this is right in the same time period where we just announced about a week or so ago, that we've received a $3.3 million grant for solar, um, electricity and so forth. That includes trying to put, uh, solar collectors on the water plant. There's some money in that grant to do some reinforcement and so forth, to make sure that the roof out there can handle these, uh, solar collectors and the weight of them and so forth. So, it may, this overlap may prevent us having to worry about a lot of additional uncovered costs. So, at this point, uh, what I've done, I immediately asked the, uh, engineers to contact roofing, uh, industrial roofing companies to get quotes, to get the work done, because I wanted to move just as quick as we could before we get any other real serious storms. We've got some pictures where there's already been a couple of them where water has run down the steps inside the plant. That plant is loaded with electrical equipment, motors, generators and whatnot. So, that's what's happening. We're just simply now moving to go ahead as soon as they can start, which I understand is going to be the first of September, uh, to go ahead and do the re-roofing there to avoid any further damage.
So, I'd just say that the, uh, City Benton Harbor Water Treatment Center or Plant is far as under Homeland Security. So, there's certain things regarding the filtration plant that must be kept, um, and treated in terms of local or national security. That's how the government looks at, uh, that particular, uh, building. So, for us to, uh, take care of it and treat it in that way is a mandate.
Is that a full roof repair? Are we getting a full roof repair?
For $64,000, I wouldn't think so, but Mr. Manager?
It is a full roof repair.
Full roof.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mayor Protem Seitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Griffin?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry? Commissioner Isom?
Yes.
Commissioner Canard? Mayor Muhammad?
Yes.
Motion carried.
This brings us to, uh, staff report. I'd like to recognize the Director of Public Safety, Director McGinnis.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize the mayor, Mayor Marcus Muhammad. Good evening, Commissioners. Um, so, busy week this week. Again, as I already said it, get out and vote tomorrow. Also, remember tomorrow, we have our National Night Out. This will be the 10th Annual. Uh, it's the biggest one in Bering County. Uh, last year, we had over 1,000 people. Uh, we gave out 823 book bags, uh, over 900 snow cones. Uh, so we've had a snow cone machine going again. And I was dunked more last year than years previous. So, for those who want to see the chief in a dunk tank, unfortunately, um, Chief Abrams doesn't have the gumption to get in a dunk tank. I said that publicly. He keeps shirking me. So, I'll be in a dunk tank. He won't get in it unless you pressure him, but I'll be in a dunk tank and, uh, looking to get wet. So, tomorrow's supposed to be a beautiful day. Uh, we got the Rough Riders giving away food, as they do. We'll give away bicycles and come down. Uh, these backpacks are provided to us by Bering County Foundation. They are good backpacks, and they're, they come fully stocked with school supplies, as well as some other resources. So, again, we have the biggest and best around in Bering County. Getting over 1,000 people is pretty good. The other ones added together don't even come close to that. Uh, and additionally, on the 21st, Clerk? What do we say? No, the 20, the car show? 23rd. Also, walking, working with Chief Abrams from Benton Township Police Department. This is actually his baby. I'm the supporting cast on this one. There'll be more information coming on that, um, shortly, but that also is a community event between Benton Harbor Public Safety and Benton Township, because you know, we work together. Um, one, Benton Harbor is our motto. Lastly, uh, chat with the chief. You want to come on and see some of the things we talk about, as we give a weekly update for our communities for both Benton Harbor and Benton Township. Uh, we get a lot of, uh, questions and comments sent to us. It's on live on Thursdays, on our Facebook page, as well as the City Benton Harbor YouTube channel. They can replay it. So, we try to be out there, let people know. Uh, reference the party. A lot of receipts, unfortunately, that left, uh, may discuss on the show, but, um, and by extension, Tosh is my cousin. So, um, that's all I have. A busy week for everybody, and let's get ready to get back to school, but come enjoy a good time tomorrow and come dunk me if you can. And remember, I talk a lot of trash in the dunk tanks. If you miss, I'm gonna cut you up.
The chair recognizes, uh, city clerk and assistant city manager Moore.
Thank you. Um, as you all know, tomorrow is Election Day. Polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. If you live in wards one and three, you vote at the Benton Harbor High School Library. If you live in wards two and four, you vote at the Virginia Edwards Community Center. If you have not returned your absentee ballot yet, there's about just shy of 500 left out there. Um, we did a call campaign last week, reached out to everybody by phone or email that was on file, um, to remind them to return it. Got a lot of phones disconnected. Um, so if you need to update that information, you can do it through our office, or you can do it online. The Michigan Voter Information Center, that's mvic.com. You can update all of your, um, contact information there. So, we reached out to everyone that we had on file. We've been receiving a lot back. Um, but like I said, there are a lot of people that don't have their contact information. About half of the people, they're still outstanding. Um, if you do not want to drop it off, you can actually run it through the tabulator at your voting precinct. So, you can vote it ahead of time, take it with you, and run it through, just as you would normally. Um, if anybody has any questions about being registered to vote, contact our office. You can do that in person tomorrow as well. Um, but all absentees have to be done through our office, dropped off through our office, or at the precinct.
Thank you. Chair recognizes city manager Little.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say to everybody listening that, as I said earlier, many of these projects are complex. We have a great deal of things that are going on in this city that are positive, that have occurred within the last 48 months, so to speak. We got about $10 million going for Ox Creek up here. That's getting underway. A million and a half in Hall Park. We had 20 million. That was for the Army. Part of that got ta, that got taken back. We still have a million and a half that's going into it. You see the, uh, fountain in front, um, uh, Martin Park, that's been sitting there for years. Uh, thanks to assistance from Whirlpool, it's up and running now. You got streets all over the city still being fixed and whatnot. Don't let people sell you bill of goods with these conspiracy theories and all that nonsense, because that's all it is. It's garbage. With the support and assistance of the majority of this commission, we've probably done more in this last 48 months. It's been done in many, many years in this city, and it's continuing to. We have more and more going on that's positive, that's gonna help this city. It's gonna take a while to dig out of some of the financial problems that result from back when they had emergency managers and so forth, but we're working on it, and we're trying to get there. And we thank you for your help.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Commissioner Canard.
I'd like to thank you all, the bearers with us and stay with us, and thanks to even the others that were here. And, uh, I'd like for you all to still come out, please, and see what is going on, especially in the city here of Benton Harbor. Uh, one of the things that I'm happy about, we got the tree taken down by the garden. What happened was the garden that was supposed to have been taken down last year, they had removed roots of the tree because they were putting the sidewalk in. So, it may weaken the tree, and it was leaning towards the garden. And, uh, it's been taken down, and I'd like to thank Commissioner Griffin and, uh, Shaquille Turner, and because they went to the high lengths of really getting help, pay behind and many others, all of you all that called in and insisted upon that tree being taken down because it was heavy, that it had came down. It could have hit one of the persons that were working there in the garden or whatever. It was a hazard. So, I'm happy that that tree is taken down. The mayor told me to be sure to mention that. So, I mentioned it, and he told me, you know, to bring that up. So, I brought it up, but I gave the credit to where it's due. I shouldn't have had to go to the lengths of coming into this year, still waiting for that tree to come down. It should have been taken down last year. But you have to stay consistent and sturdy, fight for what you believe, and get transparency in the things that I was telling you all about. We must insist upon getting a clear understanding of what's going on, because if we don't, the first thing they say, "Well, nobody complained about it." So, if you standing on my toes, and I don't tell you that you hurting me, you say, "Well, I know it was hurting," but all the time, you know, you standing on my toes. So, it's good to speak up and speak out on what is going on. So, I thank you all for coming, and thank, uh, I appreciate if you continue to come out and bear with us, and go out and vote, please, you all.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Commissioner Clark Griffin.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and as you seen, um, in person and on YouTube, the bullying and the gaslight and the attacks we get when we have our own opinions, because we don't vote all the time as the majority, you know? So, that's a lot of this hollow and attacks. It's a code of afterviolation. So, as you seen in person, this is a lot that we go through, you know? But, uh, hey, I'm built for it. I stand strong, you know? So, I'm built like a Ford truck, built to last. UAW all the way. Yes. I ain't been a UAW, I wasn't a UAW, working for 28 years, and a bargain rep for nothing. I stand strong. I can hold my own. So, also, you know, that was referenced, that some people ain't never paid for nothing. I can say that, um, I bought my house when I was 26, paid it out 10 years ago. So, everything I own, all my vehicles is paid for. So, I don't know who that was in reference to, but, uh, you know, uh, also restated that, um, commissioners speak, need to speak for themselves. When I speak, I speak for myself. Fourth Ward Commissioner. I don't need to speak for nobody else, and I don't need nobody speaking for me. And, uh, it was just so much said, even, uh, city manager said, you know, some people spinning out garbage. I know he ain't talking about his bosses, because we're all his bosses, not the majority, because he said majority. We're all his bosses up here. So, you know, um, it's just, I don't know. It's a lot of politicking going on. It's a lot of politicking going on. There's a lot of conniving, backdoor deals underhand. We never said nobody was stealing, but since people spoke on it, maybe they felt that, you know, they need to speak on it, maybe they guilty party, you know? So, we just want to say that, you know, um, it's all good. It's all good in my neighborhood. It's all good. And I'm gonna keep speaking up what's right, and people have been this place. Commissioner Henry spoke of some have been when we did this, these, well, I wasn't in office, but apartment complex. So, I still stand on what I say. I stand on ten toes. I stand on everything I said tonight, and I don't believe it's for us. Yeah, a lot of people gonna ditch this place, and a lot of people gonna probably not return. And I, you can hear, they can say what they want, and as far as people campaigning, I don't have to come and campaign. I'm unopposed. I ain't got four people on my neck. So, have a good night.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Henry.
I just hate have to go after her. But she got so much energy about it, so that's good. Um, one thing that I want the residents to know is the power is with the residents. When you come out and you're more than one, you have power. And if the elected officials are giving you all the information, you're gonna absorb that information, and you're gonna have a discernment as to what is true and what is not true. If you put it on paper, it better be true, because it's documented and it can be researched. If you speak it, it could be a lie. There's no way to check unless you go to the paperwork. So, this is gonna be a thing for us. So this is going to be a thing for us as elected officials to be more transparent with the document. If ten years from now, a person reads it and didn't know their intent, but they had a different thought about us as African-American and our community, that whole thing can be changed. So it's important that we document what we're voting on. So that will be one of the things that we're gonna work on as a body. Then I want to speak on the election. He says I can go to jail for it, but I've been there before, so. I'm gonna say this. Everybody on this board has a record. Everybody voted for something or they didn't vote for something. But my question is, what happened to it after we voted on it? Was there any human infrastructure involved in it? Was there any improvement in the human infrastructure of Benton Harbor? That's us, the human infrastructure. So everything, and I know this is at the last minute, but every one of us voted on something. And if you go back twenty-five years, two years, you can see the results of that vote. And I say, when you see the majority vote and the people get nothing twenty-five years later, that lets me know that we need some new blood in this commission. So there we go.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I'd just like to thank all of the residents who came out tonight and for everyone who spoke. I remember being a citizen coming down when I was in my twenties, just listening to meetings. I had different people that I knew that served and wanted to find out how the city operated. And so I remember sitting in those seats and wanting to do something great for the city and wanting to serve my city. And so I understand the passion. I appreciate the passion because everyone is not brave enough to do that and so I do. And I think many of us appreciate the comments and you all coming down and stating the things that are important. And I think that's important, an important part of government. And I don't think any of us wants that to be snuffed out or stopped. Just maybe when people are talking, maybe less chatting in the gallery as we're conducting business, but other than that, definitely appreciate the comments because like many have stated, we need you and you need us. And in order for our city to grow and to become better, we have to be a team. We cannot fight against each other, especially when there are things that are happening that impacts lots of people. And many of the things that we've done specifically over the last five years are good things. Housing, we haven't had housing in so many years, so to see new housing developments and roads and all of the infrastructure that's happening, that's infrastructure. And so it is a positive thing, positive movements. And Nick, who's doing the positive stories about things that are happening in Benton Harbor, we need to continue to tell those stories and do that as a team. People are looking and watching. St. Joe is getting ready to build housing. Why do you think they getting ready to build housing? They've been watching us. They've completed all of the lead lines in their streets. Why? Because they've been watching us. They quietly did it, but they're doing it because they're watching us. They're doing some of the same things because we are leading in a lot of ways. We go to events and meetings. They asking us how we doing stuff in Benton Harbor. They want to consult with us, to ask us what we're doing. How are we able to do these projects? How are we getting all this money to improve our city? It's not happening everywhere. This is a special place and just like I love myself, I love my city and I'm not gonna do anything that's gonna hurt me, not gonna do nothing that's gonna hurt me. I'd be a fool to hurt me, to cut my foot off, to smite my nose or my face. And so for people to insinuate that we gonna hurt ourselves by doing some of the things we're doing, that's foolishness. We wouldn't hurt ourselves and we definitely not gonna hurt our city where I pay taxes, I own property here. I'm not gonna do something that's gonna hurt me because I live here and because I love this city and want to see it grow and continue to flourish for the next generation. And I have kids too and want that to happen. And just like we've talked about the election, elections do matter. We saw on the national scale, elections do matter. So whether you vote or don't vote, elections do matter and they do have consequences. And so I would encourage everybody to get out and vote for people who you think are gonna do what they say that they're gonna do, but I would also say look around to see what has been done because there is a lot of work that has been done and the people that you see sitting here have done a lot of that work. So get out and vote tomorrow and thank you for coming. And as I think Commissioner Henry said, continue to come. Serve on those boards. We have a lot of openings on our committees, a lot of opening on boards and stuff like that. Serve, get involved. It's on our website. The clerk has a list. Get involved and serve so it'll help inform how you think and it'll form what you see, what you hear and what you understand. So get involved and serve. So thank you all again for coming out.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Commissioner Isom.
Honorable, thank you, Honorable Mayor. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I'd like to thank New Bethel for coming out, for the, you know, expressing their concern about what's going on at the church. I'd like to thank everyone for their comments. I'd like to thank Ms. Lee. I know the last time Ms. Lee came here, she was thanking us, you know, for the AC and the vehicles. So that's something we gotta look into and continue to come. And next time you'll come, you'll say, job well done, faithful servant or something like that, you know? So we'll keep you in mind. I want to thank Nick Gump for the updating presentation, great job, you know, letting people know that what's going on in the city, what's happening. You know, I started here in fifteen, August of fifteen and, you know, Commissioner Henry asked a good question, have things changed? I hadn't been here since August fifteen. I didn't see any change. I seen the water tower being painted, the water plant being upgraded, sewer line, storm drains, roads fixed, looking straight down Columbus. Roads are tore up now, continuing to improve this city. I hadn't seen it, so I know I've been a part of it. And my yes vote, anything to do with affordable housing, housing, I'm gonna support it. Project T, wall-on-wall, harbor tower, I'm voting yes. I want people, that was part of my campaign when Louise asked me, what you gonna do? I said, I want people to live better, a better life, betterment for the people. And housing is important because some people living in some bad situations. So that's important. So I said, Ms. Lee, what else? I ain't gonna talk about the Lions right now, but I just want to, things are happening. I want to thank Ms. Griffin, the new superintendent for the Benton Harbor Area Schools, just stopping by because, you know, the city and the schools are close tied together because education's important. They gonna look at the schools, people gonna come to Benton Harbor, they coming. I look down ninety-four and just cars just coming, they coming. All roads lead, all roads lead to Benton Harbor and it's happening in this city. This commission have made this happen under the leadership of Mayor Muhammad. You know, we done made things happen in this city and it's happening. You know, it's hard, change is hard sometimes. I done watched all the funds come in, money just coming in. I said, man, funds for this, funds for that. We ain't getting the money, I ain't get, nobody gave me nothing. People talking about money under the table, I ain't, I'm not even into that. I'm just looking for the betterment, for the money can come in, for the betterment of the people of this city. You know, I want to thank Erin for, me and my brother talk about her all the time about Project T and how excited he is about it and she is too. So things are happening, just see them bricks going up on wall-on-wall, something different in the city, building. So I just thank God for being here today and like I always say, expect great things to happen, expect great things to happen and they happening. God bless you.
Thank you. Just like to thank everyone for coming out and participating in your government. Would like to recognize my daughter, Aziza Muhammad. She has been coming down here since she was little. I remember she came down and she was a part of Dr. Tyne's Young Doctors Program as well as she came and worked in the Fresh Start Garden with Mrs., or at the time, but Commissioner Kennard today. But she'll be returning to Xavier University in Cincinnati and she is studying biology, hopefully to become a doctor. And she was the valedictorian of Benton Harbor High School in 2022. So there is some good to come out of Nazareth. It's your time? No, 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 no. So I'd just like to close my comments. Currently, United States Senator Lisa Slocken is in Benton Harbor. She hosted a town hall meeting at the Boys and Girls Club tomorrow. Will be attending a leadership luncheon and, you know, the Bible says that money salveth all things. It also says that the love of money is the root of all evil, but it balances that by saying that money salveth all things. So we have to have a balance because nothing that I've seen in government has ever gotten done without money. When we had a lead problem, over forty-five, actually about fifty-five million dollars came into Benton Harbor. City of Benton Harbor had removed and replaced every lead line in this city. Right now, people are being put in hotels where their plumbing is being totally replaced at no cost to the homeowner. We just closed on Project T, which costs money. We'll have ten homes to Habitat for Humanity and over sixty-nine duplexes. To renovate Harvard Towers, it costs money. To renovate bus, it costs money. So the city of Benton Harbor, we're not a affluent, wealthy community in terms of per capita income. So we have to work with other entities and groups and state and federal government and build relationships so we can acquire and have the resources to come into our city to impact positively the quality of life for our residents. So, you know, protest, agitation, mobilization, that's all good. But at the end of the day, this community needs resources in order to make certain changes as it relates to things. So roads are things, sidewalks are things, alleys are things, right? Houses, things. But love, unity, integrity, respect, money can't buy. That's things that people have to give to one another. So with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion is made by Commissioner Isom, supported by Commissioner Clark Griffin and Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Clark Griffin?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Isom?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennard?
Yes.
Mayor Muhammad?